Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Espinola, Mr. Bahu, Mr. Lemay?
Yeah.
Mr. Morin?
Yeah.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yeah.
Mr. Giggie?
Here.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yep.
Mr. Bootman?
Here. Uh, Mr. Giggie, can you check and see if anybody's here for a public appearance?
Mr. Chairman, no one signed in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, school committee communications, we do have one from the Administrators Association asking to discuss their contract starting after January 1st, 2017. And now a report of the student representative, Mr. Blais. Welcome.
For the organization in clubs, on Saturday, November 28th, forty Grillo students volunteered at the Lowell City of Lights Parade where they assisted with carrying banners through the parade. The Grillo Skills USA officers recently attended the Skills USA Fall State Leadership Conference, held at the Best Western in Marlboro, Mass, and returned with an impressive eighteen awards for excellence. In addition, five of our six attendees received the proactive award, a special award given to the first students to achieve their Mass State Leader Awards. Lindsay Stassi received a proactive award, her Mass State Leader Award, and a silver medal for the Community Service Team Event. Mackenzie Gomes received a proactive award and her Mass State Leader Award. Kenny De La Cruz received a proactive award, his Mass State Leader Award, a bronze medal for team profile, and a second-place overall team award. Kenny was also elected Team Historian of Team E. Nicole Helms received a proactive award, her Mass State Leader Award, and a third-place overall team award. Kylie Lambert received her Mass State Leader Award. Evan Blais received a proactive award, his Mass State Leader Award, and a gold medal for the Community Service Event. A group of health-assisting students attended the Empowering Girls Conference at the Broad Institute in Cambridge, Mass, on Thursday, December 8th. The students learned self-assessment and how to use their strengths in choosing a career path. They were also able to meet the District Attorney, Marion Ryan. The National Technical Honor Society is currently hosting a holiday flower gram fundraiser. Flowers will be sold during lunches. Students will be able to purchase a flower and have it delivered with personalized message. Grillo students will be hosting the annual holiday show on December 23rd in the lecture hall. This junior prom will be held on Friday, January 27th, from 7:00 to 11:00 PM at Lindsay's Millhouse in Drakeett. This year's theme is a winter snowball. And for the athletics, our swim and dive program saw a record number of athletes try out this season, with over a hundred students coming up for the team. The Griffin swimmers will open up what should be a strong season on December 16th here at Grillo versus Northeast. The cheer team will look to build their strong fall campaign, which saw, which they saw came qualified for D1 North Regionals. The team will also be supporting our basketball program at home games this winter. Girls' basketball opened up their season with a hard-fought game against Tinswell. Despite the loss this season, as well as future ones, looks bright for a very young Lady Griffin team, which featured many first-year players as a part of their opening game lineup. Boys' basketball opened up in a style with a thrilling win over Tinswell in their annual season-opening clash. The game also featured the dedication of a newly-named Joe Kane Court and was played in front of a packed house in a tournament-type atmosphere. And for the Griffin wrestlers, they opened up what looks like could be a special season with a 3-0 sweep over Quadmeat here at Grillo on December 10th. The team started out by dispatching Conqueror Carlisle 42 to 12 before battling down to Ruben 42-30. The day finished with the Griffins dropping Drakeett 53 to 10 to close out an impressive day of wrestling.
And I think you have an update from yesterday, too, don't you? Wrestling?
Um, yeah, we also won against Holliston yesterday.
Four and oh, right? Yeah.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Good start. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Yep.
Listen, let me ask you one question.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we didn't...
Mr. O'Hair.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we didn't have a float in the, uh, in the festivities this year, but what, you mentioned that you were carrying a flag for somebody, a banner for somebody in the parade?
He, he wasn't.
Oh, oh. In your notes, the school was, somebody from the school was carrying a banner. What banner were they carrying? Any idea? If not, don't...
Uh, honestly, I...
Yeah, alright.
Said they were assisting and carrying.
I don't know.
All set? Thank you, Mr. Blais.
I, I hope...
Okay, next.
I'm sorry.
Mr. O'Hair, you're all set?
Yep, I am.
Alright. Approval of minutes, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the November 17th, 2016, School Committee by Mr. Tatsias, second by Mr. Morin. Roll call.
Mr. Espinola, Mr. Bahu, Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Bootman?
Yes. Okay. We're gonna pass over right now the warrant, we'll come back to it. There's no report that I see of the General Counsel. And next up, we have a report of the Superintendent Director. Mr. Bourgeois, turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. So, first item on my agenda is the 2016-17 Substance Use Prevention and Education Plan, and I'll ask the Assistant Superintendent Principal Jill Davis to, to go over that with you.
Does everybody get the plan? So, last March, an act relative to substance use treatment, education, and prevention was signed into law. And as a result... And as a result, schools were required to develop policies and protocols regarding substance use prevention and education of its students. So, before you is, is our plan. And just to, just to explain the plan very quickly, the plan contains policies and protocols, and if you look up on page one in the table of contents, under policies are four policies, which you have already approved, which are located in the Student Handbook, on pages 32 and 42 in the Student Handbook. The plan also uncalls protocols related to curriculum in substance abuse prevention and intervention, professional development...
That's good. Yes.
And resources for our families and our students. And that's basically a summary of what the plan involves. There will be some amendments to the plan next year because the law also requires that schools start screening for substance, substance abuse, which is a verbal screening that will occur next year. Right now, we're in the process of setting up a committee to develop an implementation plan of what that will look like here at Grillo.
Did you say you're gonna have a, you're only gonna have a company?
No, a committee.
A committee, I'm sorry.
A committee that will, that will form to discuss how we are gonna implement the verbal screening process here at Grillo.
Okay. Great, thank you.
So, gonna need a, a motion and a vote on, on the plan to approve the plan.
Second by Mr. Morin, second by Mr. Lemay.
Mr. Espinola, Mr. Bahu, Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Bootman?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I just wanna wish you all a happy holiday and a happy new year, and again, thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
And the next item is the monthly co-op update. And we, we currently have 189 students out on co-op, all in our senior class. The juniors aren't eligible yet. They'll be eligible after the grades close, the end, January 20th. Once the report cards come out, then they'll be eligible and they'll be able to start going out on jobs as well. We're, we're right at the, the same mark we were at at this time last year. We had 40% of this class out, we had 40% at that time, so we're, we're holding our own. We have the most kids, as far as number of employed, in the Commonwealth. We have more, more job, more kids out working than any other school. We also have more kids than any other school.
Percentage-wise, we have more.
Percentage-wise, we're number two.
Number two.
We're thirty, combined for the juniors and seniors at the end of last year, we were just over 37%, and I think there's a school that, that had 50%. But we were number two. We were number two, yeah. And that's our goal, is to climb up there, too. And then, two meetings ago, not last meeting, but two meetings ago, I, I just mentioned that in my, when we did my goals for my evaluation, that one of the things was to hold a municipal event, but we, we need to get some guidance from you as to, because there was discussion, is it gonna be a breakfast, is it gonna be a luncheon, is it gonna be a dinner? And what's the date gonna be? And, and which, which type of event is it gonna be? So, I don't know if you've had a chance to, 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 you know, think about that and whether or not, we, we can't send out the, save the date or start making the invitations until we have a, a date from you folks, so we're kinda dependent on, on, on you.
The last one was a lunch, correct?
No, they're all usually dinner.
They're all dinners?
I think they've been, I don't, I wasn't here, but I...
They've been dinner, yeah.
There were dinners in the past, maybe?
I was gonna...
Because whatever you guys want, we will do, we will be more than happy to do. We just need some direction.
Dinner maybe fits people's schedules a little better.
Yeah.
I'll just speak for Lowell, a lot of elected officials have two jobs and they have to make time as far as subcommittee meetings and that, if we wanna get some good participation.
Yeah, we, excuse me.
One of the things I had heard from some of the Lowell counselors was, lunch would be better for them because they have so many meetings at night and so many other obligations. Something that Mr. Bourgeois brought up was, if we do a lunch, they actually get to come in and see our students working, you know, in the different shops.
Yeah.
And we could take them on a tour to see, you know, it's nice to look at the machine shop or cosmetology, but when you see the hustle and bustle when Lieutenant Governor Toledo came through, I mean, that was wonderful, see those kids in cosmetology working on everybody that was there. So, I'll throw that out, I'm not sure, from the, some haven't cared, two had made, said a lunch would be better for them. So, I'll, I'm just one person, but...
I would call, call the members and whatever, whatever the majority feels, that's fine with me. Whatever's advantageous to everyone.
Can we, can we possibly go on the, try a lunch this time and then in a year or two, if we do it again, you do the dinner? You know, start switching back and forth? So, someone may not be able to come to the dinner, but they'd be able to come to the lunch or vice versa?
Let me, may...
Mr. Morin, was, is he on first?
Well, my comment would be like, depending on what their schedule is.
On what?
You know, like, while you know, you know the day, you know, you know when it's a, when it's a council meeting, you know when there are other meetings, you know, when Drakeett has their meetings or Tinswell or municipal or whoever to say, is, is it better for lunch or is it better for dinner? I don't know how we, you know...
When it was a dinner, Thursday night was the best night that there were no meetings for the community members.
Yeah, 'cause it's either Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and they kinda tend to stay away from, you know, Fridays, you know, but I just don't know that, like you say, lunch could be better, but then it could, it could be, who knows? You know what I mean?
Sure.
And then could I fit lunch in? But I don't have time for tours, gotta come in and boom, I don't know.
Well, the, well, the history of this is that one, one year, there was a little incident between Grillo and Lowell High School, and this was over football. And I'm not gonna mention any names, but one of the counselors was very adamant and very vocal on this, so we tried to arrange something that they would see what Grillo is all about, what we do here at Grillo. So, we had, that was the first event. It was an evening event, they had a superintendent and some of the directors made a presentation, and it was a very, very successful, successful evening. So much so, that one of the counselors in Lowell who was very adamant on his complaints went down to, was invited down to the car shop, and it was midnight, but still they were in there and showed them. And it was a little incident about, he said, the counselor said, quote, "Jeez, I never knew you did this, why don't you tell people?" And the answer was, "We can't tell people, it was an undercover car." But anyway, since that time, that was strictly Lowell and, and two or three more after that, that was mixed from all the different communities, and everybody enjoyed it. I think you have to remember what the audience is that you wanna bring in. We brought in town managers, city managers, and you, I think there were a lot of administrators from the Lowell school system, and everybody, I mean, you could've fit more in, but I think we limited to how many people that we wanted to have at, at this event, and they all worked perfect. So, my philosophy is, if something works, keep it up.
Okay, I guess we'll just go around the room and ask what each member would like. I'll start with you, Mr. Morin, lunch or dinner?
I'm in.
Okay. Mr. O'Hair? Lunch or dinner?
Uh, dinner.
Mr. Giggie?
I'm in either way, but try a lunch and see what the turnout will be for that.
Okay.
Um, I'd lean toward lunch, I think everybody has to take lunch and afterward, who knows what people are doing.
Mr. Lemay?
Oh, I'm open to either or. I'm, I'm not gonna be critical of what someone's schedule might be versus how many attend. Obviously, we want the best attendance. I'm fairly new here, I'm, I'm open to either suggestion.
Okay, thank you. I, I would say lunch, too, just from the feedback I got, that would be more beneficial, so let's, let's try a lunch this year, and then with the mindset that next year could be a dinner, and then we'll see how, how the feedback goes with blow. Mr. O'Hair?
Yeah, I think the big, the big issue is that you just don't wanna fill the haul up. You're looking for stakeholders and key people that are involved in the actions between Grillo and, and the communities.
In the past, it's been the super, the city and town...
Managers.
Managers, the superintendents, the city council or selectmen, school committee members, and finance, and the local delegation. That's who it's been in the past for the people invited.
Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, I recollect, we just had something, I think in, uh, springtime at the YW, YMCA in Lowell.
Yes.
It was a breakfast. And I thought that was pretty well attended from a breakfast standpoint.
Yeah, it was.
Mr. Lemay, the light just went off when you said that, that's an excellent point. Talking about some city councilor, selectman, school committee members having to stay out at another event at night, coming in a little bit early for that, maybe doable. I mean, the school's open at seven. You know, we could start at 7:30, 7:30 to 9:00?
Yeah, that entailed chance for another, but I remember Drakeett was well-represented from the town manager down and Lowell people.
I, I, okay, I changed my vote. Mr. Morin?
That just means bringing the staff in, culinary staff would have to come in an hour earlier or something than normal, because they have to prep the stuff, you know what I mean?
So, the kid, the kids would do a lot of the prep the day before, but then we, but then, no, Paul's absolutely right, we would have to have staff, because the kids don't start until eight o'clock, that they'd just be getting in. But we can, we can make it work, we'll make it work.
Can we do the tour first, then breakfast?
Something like that, too.
You know?
Takes an hour to prep the clock.
The only thing is, when, when you tour while homeroom's going on, there isn't, there isn't a lot going on, you know?
I, I, I think that's an excellent idea. If we, if you can make it work with the staff, I think we'd get a lot more people. You're right, the YMCA was...
What time, what time did the Y event start, do you remember? Was it an eight o'clock breakfast, or was it earlier than that?
Yes, that was a catered.
Uh, yes, it was eight o'clock, because I was on the, the McDonough Show.
City Life, yeah.
Till eight, it started at eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, so we could do an eight o'clock breakfast.
Is everybody good with that? Mr. O'Hair, you, you've been here the longest, do you think that, I thought that was an excellent, well-attended at the Y.
It entailed police chiefs, fire chiefs as well, too, for Marion.
It was, it was well-attended, but I think Roger brings up a good point, that that was a catered, you know, a company came and catered. In our, in our situation, it's, it's usually the staff, the kids that are going to do the prep for the food that's gonna be served. And I think you, I mean, you can always work around and get them in earlier, get them in later, but I, you know, all I'm saying is, the ones that we had before, we did it just the opposite, and they worked. As far as any, whatever you think is best is what we should do, but I'm just telling you, they were successful.
I just recollected that, that's the only reason I brought it up, so...
I'm switching to breakfast. Mr. O'Hair, you wanna stay with the dinner?
I'll stay with the dinner till we'll see what happens.
Mr. Morin?
I'm, I'm flexible.
Mr. Giggie?
I'm flexible, I haven't done this.
Mr. Tatsias?
I only went with lunch, 'cause I thought it would be easier for a lot of people, but I'll go with what, you know...
Okay, Mr. Lemay?
And again, I'll, I'll defer to either or for me.
Alright, so, Mr. O'Hair wants to...
I want, I want what works for everybody else.
Mr. O'Hair suggests dinner, I suggest breakfast, someone needs to step up here.
Okay, I'll try breakfast rather.
Very good. Anybody else?
Breakfast it is. Give it a shot.
Give it a shot.
Thank you.
Just have to pick a good date.
Okay, that's next.
That's why I handed you the calendar.
I, I don't know, it's just kinda tough.
Mr. Bourgeois, you said something about end of March, beginning of April would be preferable for staff?
Yeah, either before, sometime before the April vacation, so either, you know, maybe the last week in March or the, the first week in April, I think is what we were talking about two months ago.
Does anybody have any concerns with those dates?
Any one of those dates.
Mr. Lemay?
I'll be away for the March, I mean, I'll be here the first week of April, but...
Okay.
That's just me, and again, don't, you know, don't go by me.
You're here.
When are you gonna be gone, all of March?
That must be nice.
All of March. He's earned it.
He's taken me with him.
So, if we do the first week?
I'm actually back for the 29th. I'm back for 29th of March.
There's nothing on the calendar.
Okay, so which day of the week?
I'm probably gonna think of Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, you don't wanna do Friday.
Is it Tuesday bad for Lowell? Because they're getting into the week.
Yes, that's true. Wednesday or Thursday?
No, and Wednesday is the school committee in Lowell.
Every other week.
Every other week.
First and third, I think.
So, that would be the first week.
Sounds like Thursday then, right?
Okay, Thursday it is. Process, thank you, Cheryl.
Figure out, so April 6th.
Alright, we have a date.
Is that that, Chad?
We'll get the, save the dates out, and we'll get the invitations done, and...
Excellent.
And we'll get a plant. Excellent, thank you.
You need us to do it the 30th, I'll be back. Yeah, two, whatever it is.
Six.
Six is fine.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, I've got two donations of cars for the Auto Tech Shop kids to be able to practice on, 99 Subaru and 204 Dodge Stratus. The letters from Mr. Ducharme are in the, are in the folder, so we're looking for you to approve that those two donations, so that we can accept them.
Mr. O'Hair? Second by Mr. Giggie?
I would've thought that Mr. Coolah Harris could've got another ten, ten years out of that 99 Subaru, but I appreciate his donation.
Mr. Espinola, Mr. Bahu, Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Bootman?
Yes.
And the next item on my report is to, as I've done the last couple of years, is to request out-of-state travel for up to 30 teachers and administrators to attend professional learning communities at Work Institute. It's gonna be at Atlanta again this year, was in Atlanta last year, that's the closest one. We went to Syracuse the year before. It's the closest one, you know, to, to access. It, last year, it was the, towards the end of July, this year, it's, it's actually right after school gets out, June 28th to the 30th, which may work out better for, for staff, because they, they might not have gone away yet on vacation, so, so just looking, or asking for your approval for up to 30 staff members.
Hi, Mr. Morin?
Mr. Superintendent.
Oh, you have to motion and then a second, and then we can do questions? Motion by, just talk, is there a motion by Mr. Tatsias? I need a second before we can proceed. Bye, Mr. Giggie? Okay, Mr. Morin?
My question was, is that the cross per?
Per.
The 689, is that the...
Right.
669, 'cause there's five or more. See the little, under the 689?
Okay, yeah.
If there's five or more.
Yeah, when you get older, you won't see that. Well, no, I mean approximately $700 a person. Times 30, whatever.
Twenty-one thousand.
And then we...
You did a PowerPoint last year.
It's about, yep. No, I mean, it's, it's, it's been very successful, it's really made a difference in, in how the people who have gone really approach the, the improvement process with regard to teaching. It's a, it's a national, it's prob, it is the leading nationally renowned school improvement model that's out there.
And that has been flexible with, went from one year to the next?
Right. What we do is, if, if you approve it, I will send out, either Jill or I'll send out an email to staff, and people who have not gone yet will get first preference. And last year, we had 33 go. I came back and you approved another five, when I had more than the 30 that wanted to go. And I think 22 of them hadn't gone, and the, the others went back, because it's valued to going more than once as well, you, you get a deeper understanding. So, people who have gone also would like to go back, but we, we give first preference to anybody that has not gone yet.
Well, that's kinda like where I, myself and other colleagues here go to the conference each year, you know, or, or who you saw there last year, to compare notes to, you know what I mean? So, but, no, it's good.
Thank you.
Okay, I have Mr. O'Hair, then Mr. Lemay, then Mr. Tatsias. Go ahead, Mr. O'Hair.
Yes, I think this is a, sounds like a very good idea, however, I have a lot of reservations. You know, this will be over 60 people that we've sent down south to a, a conference, so, whatever. And I don't know offhand how many teachers there are in this school, but it sounds like we're encroaching, you know, when we get up into that 60, if we noticed any change for, for those, the first group that went. And if you're sending that many people to a conference, why don't you renegotiate and have the conference here? That way, you know, I know this, this is a grant, isn't it?
We, we fund the vast majority of the expense out of a grant.
Okay, so we, we're paying, we're paying it for, out of our budget, and I just, you know...
I'm sorry, excuse me, did you say it's out of a grant?
We fund the majority out of it, of it, out of a school improvement grant, right?
The majority is paid out of the grant?
Right, it's a, it's a grant for professional development, we have to spend it on KD.
I didn't hear the end of that either, so, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. O'Hare.
And all our teachers, you know, all our teachers go through professional development, you know, to keep their certifications and everything else, and I, I'm not trying to make a comparison between what they're doing in South Carolina or down south, but I think we have the same type of talent in, in this area, and as a result, I really don't see why we're sending that many people in a short period of time. You know, it's, are we trying to send the entire school to Texas or North Carolina or wherever they're going? I don't, you know, I, I think you can do just as well right at this, right at this facility. In many cases in the past, they'd send a pilot group down, and from there, they'd pick what they've learned and disseminate that information with the school committee here, rather than sending 30 more people. And I'm sure it sounds like this is going to continue, 30 more will go in a few more months, and the entire school body gets over. I just think there's other ways to minimize the amount of money that's being spent.
Mr. Boujwa, maybe you could explain.
Yeah, the, so the, the goal would be for every, for every faculty member that's part of our, the professional learning community that we're trying to build, to experience the conference. If you talk to people who, who don't go, and they hear from their colleagues who went, they had, you know, they, they, they say things like, oh gee, you know, we're pretty much already doing that, right? And, and then, then they go, and they come back and say, oh my God, I never thought it was, I never thought it was that intense, or I never thought it was that good. So this initiative goes back to my first half a year here. We put a focus group together to look at education reform models, and this was the model that we investigated, that we felt was the one that would best, it was the best model out there, and it would serve this school's long-term improvement goals the best. In order to implement it, you know, you really, you really have to, it's called the Professional Learning Communities at Work Institute. It's really, it's hard to describe. It's really life-changing as far as how you look at your, your, the profession of education. It's, it's that, it's that higher quality. I've been to a lot of professional development in my 36 years, and this is by far a better investment than anything else that I've ever attended. But again, I'm asking permission, I'll, I'll do whatever you guys decide you want me to do.
Mr. Lemay, then Mr. Tatsias, then Mr. Giggie?
Mr. Superintendent, what's the name of the grant again?
So there's, the, there's a grant for, Jill, do you remember the, Billy Joe can help us out here.
Title II-A.
Title II-A. It's, it's for educator improvement, right?
Right.
So it needs to be spent on professional development. So whether we spend it on this professional development, which is what, you know, we've identified as an administrative team and as a faculty, that we, you know, that we, we feel is what we want to pursue, or spend it on, it'll be spent on professional development. We can't spend on anything else.
Is there a, do we currently have a budget line item for these types of work institutes as well, besides the grant?
There's a professional development line item as well. Each teacher by contract over a three-year period gets to spend $1,800 on their own professional development. That professional development is in that line item. So teachers take courses, teachers go to, to different workshops, things like that.
How much is in that line item, you know?
I, I don't know offhand what's in that line item. Hundred and fifty thousand, I think. Billy Joe's nodding. Yeah. And this grant is in addition to that line item, it supplements obviously that line item with grant money.
So this is the third year, we've never done that type of thing prior, other administrations, or maybe some of the more seasoned members would know. I don't know.
I, I thought they had, I thought they had gone on conferences before, when I first started.
I mean, 30 sounds like a small number, but yeah, like when you say.
Can you recall, call, Mr. O'Hare? Has this happened before, where they would go to a conference?
Some people went to a conference, and I forget what the conference was, but I don't really think it applies to what you're talking about now. But always remember this, that every teacher that teaches here or any other place has to maintain their certification constantly. And they have, to my knowledge, they all have, there hasn't been any complaints about them not recert, getting recertified, and it's one of the advantage Roger mentions, but we get that done. The other thing is that the, I feel very confident in what they have right now, because the MCAS scores are going up, and that's exactly what we're trying to do. So we're meeting some of our goals, and we're exceeding what we've done in the past, and we just want.
Miss Davis would like to speak.
Yeah. So it's, you know, do what you want, but that's bringing six, if you're going to bring, if you, let me just say this, if you're going to bring 60 people, or it's going to be 90 next year, I don't know, why don't you bring the instructor up here? That way you only have to pay transportation for one person rather than 60.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go in order and get to Ms. Davis in a second, but will you finish, Mr. Lemay? I knew you asked a question for Mr. O'Hare to answer, but I think we got off track. Okay.
He did, and I, I think he makes some sense in the point that if we are going to have this every year, and we have a certain amount, maybe we could have it here.
So, if I may.
Sure.
It's not a matter of bringing one person here. There are, the, the national leaders in education, there's probably a faculty that, that, that does this, that offers all the breakout sessions and the keynotes, it's probably a dozen people, right, that's, that you have the choice of going to. So you see, you, you all go to the same keynotes each day.
So is it windowing wide, or is it nationwide?
It's na, it's national, yeah. They, they run, they, they run these all over the country. Yeah. People come from actually all over the world. They'll, you know, there'll be about 1,000 people or more there. They'll be from Canada, from China, they'll be from, from other places, mostly from, from.
Is this something that you, you would like to see all staff or administrators attend?
Yeah, we have two, 240 faculty members.
And I know you can only send so many, but is, do we mandate it? I know there's certifications, what Mr. O'Hare said, but.
If, if people go to this, they, they get PDPs towards their relicenter, right? So you do get PDPs for this, and it does count for your relicenter.
Yet there are those that don't want to participate at all.
Well, this is, it's optional. It's optional. So it's whether, I mean, if we put it out and nobody wants to go, then we, nobody will go. If there's an, an interest in people going, then, you know, the first time that I put it out, I thought that we might get maybe a half a dozen, and we got 28 the first year. I was shocked, right? And then last year I put it out, I asked for 30, and I had 33 people respond that they'd like to go. So. But it's not something that, that you could, you could, you know, necessarily bring here by bringing a person in.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Yeah. I, I, we did this when I was at Essex Aggie for six years, and that's, that was my experience, that it works, right? And we did, we sent, we sent people each year. It was a smaller faculty, so we spent, sent us, we sent a smaller number of folks each year.
So is this, just to follow up, this, this grant, this grant, this, this is the only criteria that, that grant meets as far as we, do we utilize it for other things as well?
We can use it for any type of professional development. This is the type of professional development that's been in, identified in our school improvement plan and identified through our focus group that, that we feel.
No, but last year you said, and I remember you came back to us, you had an extra five staff, so you needed an additional appropriation.
I didn't want to say no to anybody that wanted to go, yeah. So then we, we ended up being three. I got permission for five, but it ended up being three. So thirty. So nobody, nobody got, we didn't, we didn't say no to anybody who wanted to go and get this experience.
So are you also saying then that if there was 50, we would send 50?
I, no, I, I wouldn't have come back. I, I only came back to you because it was only a couple of people. I didn't want to say no. Obviously, if, I would love for it to be 80 or 50. I would not be coming back, you know. 30 would be. I only did it because it was a couple. I didn't want to say no to a couple of people, right? Ended up being three.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Tatsias?
Everybody else pretty much covered what I was going to say, but ideally, would you like to have everybody go? Not at one time?
Right. Ideally, over a span of eight or 10 years, it would be really good if each year 30 different people went, until everybody got a chance to go, so that everybody had the same shared knowledge and shared understanding of what it was we were trying to do. That would be what we would hope for, yeah.
My last question would be, so does that mean?
Hold on, hold, excuse me, Mr. Lemay, I'm going to let Mr. Tatsias finish, and then I'm going to let Mr. Giggie, because he was next in order, and then I'm going to go, Ms. Davis, and then you. Go ahead. Mr. Tatsias, you have a second. Mr. Giggie?
I know last year, I think that seminar or conference was collaborative learning, is that?
This one?
Yeah.
So it's professional learning communities at work. There's three big ideas. The first one is that it's about whether or not kids learn, it's not about whether or not we taught, right? There's a difference, that, you know, you teach, so it's, it's changing a mindset. So it's about whether or not we're getting, you know, kids are learning. It's a different focus. The second thing is that we need to do it collaboratively and interdependently, that we can't do it in isolation, which traditional education models, teachers go into their classroom, they shut their door, and they're, they're on their own. So they're not really collaborating with other teachers that teach the same subject, to see what, whether or not there's better practices out there. And then the third thing is, is accountability for results, that, that we, we, we hold ourselves accountable to actually get better learning outcomes. It's not just good intentions that we tried, but, but it's an accountability for, for results.
So, and that's the goals and the direction that you, as the superintendent, want to kind of move this school in, and along with what George has suggested, are there any other options for professional development that may meet those objectives? That you're aware of, or may?
No, the, the learning, the PLC at Work Institute is the only vehicle out there that I'm aware of, that, that, that does, you know, that model, right, that, that supports that model.
And that's $700 per person, that's part of their 1,800 professional development?
No, no, this is, this is, this is school, this is above. They still have their, because, because this is optional. And this is, you know, this is really being promoted by us because, you know, we have a lot of faith that, that this is going to accelerate learning for our kids.
And can the teachers use that as part of their requirement?
Yep. The PDPs they get for this will count for their relicenter.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Lemay, do you mind if I invite Ms. Davis up before you? I know she's been leading to speak, she's been jumping out of her seat. Come right up, Ms. Davis.
I think, Mr. Boujwa, I think clarify that, and I wanted to further clarify, that it's not a one-shot deal. It's just not, everybody goes to, to a PD conference and that's it. This is to go to learn the knowledge and skills, to, to continue to implement what they learned here. Now all of our clusters have teams, they're professional learning communities, that are grade-level teams, that meet and talk about curriculum instruction and assessment, and use the knowledge that they learned at the, at this PD to, to create this process of, you know, that all students can learn, and what are we going to do when they're not learning, and how do, how are we going to ensure success for all our students? And that's the mindset that this PD sort of instills, the curriculum, the instruction, the assessment, the intervention mindset, and how do we work all together collaboratively to achieve those results, and how do we hold each other accountability, accountable in achieving those results? So it's more than just attending a PD for three days. It's, it's a mindset, and taking that mindset back here, and working with your grade-level teams to ensure success for our students. It's, it's, it's what we've been doing for several years, and, and it has made a difference here in this building. So I think it's very valuable and very important. And yes, there are other PD opportunities that are out there, but we believe that this one has showed us a success, and we'd like to carry, continue to carry, carry that on.
Thank you.
I've gone twice. Actually, I went seven years ago, when, when Du-4 first, first came out. I've gone to these two, and every time I go, I learn something new. So I think it's great. I think teachers would say it was great. The teachers who have gone really have gotten a lot, a lot out of it. Some have actually spoken, maybe can come here to speak to you, to tell you how much it has influenced their practice, and how it has changed them as a teacher, and how that has also changed the influence that they have on their students. So I definitely am an advocate for the professional learning community model, and for our teachers to go attend professional development. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lemay, you had a follow-up, I believe?
Is, is there different material that's offered every year, or is it the same material?
No.
Last three years you.
So the, so the breakout sessions, so the material that's offered is updated from the year before, so they're constantly improving it. They'll offer new breakout sessions as they get developed. But if you go, the keynotes and the breakouts are different each year. And even if there is a breakout that was the same, then you'd go to a different breakout. So you can never go to a conference and not find something that, that you, you know, that you already did, right, that you, that you didn't have an option. Another thing, just to piggyback on what Jill said, is that this isn't, this isn't a one-shot deal, that you go, you learn a technique, and you come back, and you're all done, right? You know, this is an, this is an improvement process. You get a little bit better each year. Each year you improve a little. So it's an ongoing, evolving. The, the guy who does, one of their most dynamic keynote guys, right, that talks, right, he talked about how he did this for eight years. He took his school district from a struggling school district to a very high-performing district, and after eight years, that you're never done, is what he, you know, you're always involved, and the, it, it's very, I guess it's similar to Deming and the, the TQM model, the Toyota. It's about constant improvement. How are you always constantly working to improve your organization? And it doesn't end. It's a journey, right? It's, it doesn't end. And this is the process that keeps you focused on the right things that are going to make a difference for kids.
I appreciate the words that Miss Davis said, and I, and I can, you know, understand someone in Miss Davis's capacity going the last two years, like she said. Is it your understanding that you, you would like to have different staff members, but you won't allow them the same ones to go every year, or?
I think if, if you were to approve 30, the first choice would be for people that haven't gone. That's what we did last year, you, you approved 30. So we got 22 people who hadn't gone. But then I also had 12 people, or 11 people, who wanted to go again, right? So that's when I came back and asked you if it's, so people going a second time, they're going to get a deeper understanding of the process, right? They're going to, they're going to continue to learn.
And as a school crew member, I think I'll attempt to get a deeper understanding as well. So I appreciate everyone's input. Enlightened being somewhat.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just?
Mr. O'Hare, no, excuse me, Mr. O'Hare was first. Thank you, Ms. Davis. First, okay. She's deferring to you, Ms. Davis.
I've gone every year as the leader of the building. And part of going to the conference, we also sit and meet and discuss about what we're learning on a daily basis, and how we can take that back and make a difference here. So as a leader, and to build.
Ms. Davis, please come up to the microphone so you can, that's okay. You're giving, I was going to try and paraphrase, but I'm not doing justice.
And to continue to build that professional learning culture with the new individuals who haven't gone, that's why I have gone every year. But if, if it would mean me stepping back for more people to go, I'm, I'm okay with that. But it was, Roger and I were the consistence of going all the time, so we can sit and meet and, and, and talk about what we're learning and how we can make an impact when we return.
Thank you.
So it's, it's also about building relationships among team members.
Okay, thank you.
What you're known for.
Mr. O'Hare?
Well, I think we have talked a lot about this thing, and let me just say that, you know, what Jill is saying, that she has gone, she is a person that was there. Roger's talking about sending people en masse, you know, 10 every year, or 20 every year, or whatever, 30 every year. Those, some of the things that you're saying right now, we've already done in this particular school. When, when Sheila Herbert was here, she set up a similar forum, but it was only of people within this geographic area. People in attendance were directors, teachers, administrators. In addition, there were staff from the university, Don Pearson, who was the vice president of.
Provost.
Provost. He was, came to some of the meetings, and some of the other professors from different disciplines were there. And I believe, and there was a lot of things that took place during that period of time, and those professionals went back to their teams and worked as a team concept rather than just one-on-one. In the meantime, they also, like any other teacher, fell into that category that they had to be certified every, have, they had, they took courses every year to be certified. And that, that was, I think what, what you're trying to do here is just about do every possible thing for the teacher, including putting milk and cupcakes in front of them. Because most, most of the teachers that went to the seminar when Sheila was here, and this was, this was the first one that was done in ages because of, a previous superintendent had tenure, he was here for a long time, and maybe fell into the, that concept of some of the old ideas. The whole idea concept changed. They met constantly, they met, they brought people into the classroom. It wasn't a case of, and don't get me wrong, I'm not against this, but I'm against the money that you're going to be spending on this thing. And then, regardless of what you teach them, they're still going to have to come back and take, and, and we're going to pay them, to take, get ready and, and take the credit courses that they need to keep their certification. I think it's, it's, it's nice. Is it affordable? Depends on how you like to spend money. I'm a little more conservative, I think. I, I've seen it done, and I don't know if anybody here was on the committee then, when Sheila was here, but that's exactly what, what happened. And that was done on weekends. It took about a month and a half to get all those concepts developed. And there was an increase in, in statistics at the school because of what happened, and I just feel as though that we should stay on the same track. I noticed that, not so much Roger, but the Department of Education, every two years they change and come up with new concepts. This, this thing will last for a period of time, but they won't last forever. time, but they won't last forever, because you see all these things that are coming, coming up in it, they don't, there's no, to me, there's no continuity a lot of times in education. You're always getting challenged with a new, new piece. I feel as though what we have here, the colleges that we have adjacent to this building, make it easy for teachers to be recertified, and as being recertified, you know they're staying up to the techniques that they need to be a teacher. That's all I'm going to say, you do what you want, but I'm, I'm telling you, we've done this before, and I, I think I would have a hard time explaining how come sixty people from greater law went down to New Orleans, or wherever it is, down to North Carolina, when they could have got this, pretty much the same type of service in Lowell, Massachusetts at the university.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hare. Ms. Turner, would you like to speak?
Hi, I'm, I'm very frugal, I'm an accountant, so I share your concern, but I wanted to tell you that I did go to this conference, and one of the key things they talked about and taught was old-fashioned teachers, traditional teachers stayed in their classrooms, and they just did what they're used to doing, they didn't go out and share ideas. So the point was, they're telling us to collaborate and get out there and, you know, learn from each other, and one of the key things on this conference is, you know how you said, bring the people to us? I had mentioned that to Roger, oh, we should bring them to us, but one of the key, one of the important things we had missed out on is we then wouldn't have all of the people from all over the country with all their great ideas and all their super-successful schools sharing their ideas. It was really like a round table of educators coming together, and one of the key things that they mentioned was, this is a research industry, education is constantly changing and will always change, and one of the things that we got to enjoy when we were there is hearing all of their, the things they've learned. And one important analogy that they shared was the Dufour, how do you pronounce his name? He's suffering, he is, he has cancer, and they were talking about how he had a local doctor, he went to the local doctor, the local doctor couldn't figure out the problem, so then they went to the best doctor in the country, and they went all over the, the country to different doctors, and, you know, to try these new treatments. The point is, they didn't stop in-house, like if we just use the people here, or in the state of Massachusetts, they reached out, and together as a team, they started to make progress. From an accountant's point of view, who likes to be frugal, when I went to that conference and came back, I came back with a new attitude. I went into my office, and instead of me just saying, do this, do that, I brought everyone to the table, and we had a collaborative approach to problems. It was really, really impactful. And that's coming from a cheap person.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
You were the business manager, and you went in this, chunked it also?
Yes, I did.
Oh, good.
And there were other business managers there, and they were doing the same thing. And by the way, it wasn't like you're there all day, there's all kinds of networking events, it's not where you get to go, and, you know, you're not going out having fun, you're actually there all day networking.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Turner.
I, I would just like to say a couple of things, I was skeptical when this first came up three years ago. Mr. O'Hare made the comment, there'll be something new in two years, this isn't something like that. Having been involved with my kids growing up in the schools, I've always seen that, it's, it's a cocoon, almost, you're, the teacher's classroom, you know, principals run the school, teachers have the classroom, you, as a parent, doesn't, don't have much say. In the business world, you're constantly to get better in your profession, working with others to find out what the best ways to do this. This is why we have our advisories, we bring in professionals to help our, our different technical programs to become better. There is nothing locally, that I'm aware of, that competes with something like this, I mean, there's seven different keynote speakers. For us to bring those keynote speakers here would be, just be too expensive, I think it would be more than the $21,000 that we would spend just to pay them, never mind to put them up, feed them in the hospitality, you're able to network. We've also tasked the superintendent and the assistant superintendent with making our school better. Four years ago, when I got here, we were at the 16th percentile of all high schools in Massachusetts. That means eighty-four percent of the schools were better than we are. We're now at forty-six in four short years. I said this two meetings ago, they're taking credit now for our increases. Our scores are going up, we now have AP courses at our school that we've never had before, that we were told our kids can't do it, but they can, and they're doing it. Our Skills USA numbers have advanced, the, the number of kids participating in sports and everything. The teachers are helping more, and they're learning more. This is money well-spent, it's from a grant, and we've tasked the superintendent and assistant superintendent to raise the bar. I know when I interviewed you, that was my big push, how are you going to get us up academically? And you've done that with your help, Ms. Davis, and the staff you have. So if you're proposing this, it's paid through a grant, you decide, you're suggesting where the grant money goes, I think it's a great program, and I think we should support it. So with that said, I'll ask for a roll call.
Ms. Espinola, Mr. Bahu, Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare.
Oh.
Mr. Booton.
Yes.
Thank you. One other thing that I didn't put in my report, because I didn't know they were going to be ready, was that Chad's department has three more of the videos of the shops, I don't know if you remember, we did AutoTech last year as a pilot, and he's got three more of the videos that will end up eventually, I think they're still in, they're not quite polished yet, or are these all finished?
They're pretty much done.
So they're ready to go on the website, they'll, they'll appear on, when you, when you search the shop, besides pictures, they'll, they'll show up, these little videos, so. So I'd, I'd just like Chad to be able to share these three videos with you, just kind of see the work that's been accomplished.
So you've already seen the automotive technology, we have three more that we've finished, this is a collaboration between both myself and the media folks and the library, and we're really, really happy with the end result. So I'll start with health assisting, they're all going to have the same beginning, and then to be consistent. And then the last one is medical assistance. So the idea is that every one of our programs will have one of these promotional videos, along with our new recruitment video that's coming out within the next few weeks, it'll be on the website. We're taking a new approach to everything we do with how we're promoting it, we want it to be attractive to students and people who are interested in each program, so, you know, the ideal is that when you go to any one of the programs on the website, you can watch a two or three-minute video on that particular program. So, thoughts? So far, it's all good?
Good.
Very good.
A little graphic, that last one, but turn away, it'll be good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Me, you'll be very effective.
Thank you, Mr. Fallon.
Sure.
And just lastly, I just wanted to mention that last Friday, I know Anthony mentioned the basketball game last Friday, the two-point win over Tinsborough, but we had a reception and a halftime dedication ceremony for Joe Keen Court, that, and, and several of you were there, thank you for coming, but it was, it was really, really a good, a good, a really nice event. So I just wanted to just mention that, too, very grateful to Eric Burgess, because he, he brought the nomination forward, and, you know, Joe's daughter and, and son, as well as his wife, for-
McGlaughlin was very, that too.
Dave McGlaughlin did a great job, too, he, so just wanted to mention that. And that's my report, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Superintendent. We're going to go back to the approval of the warrants. Which was item number seven. Entertain a-
Waive the reading.
Motion by Mr. Moran to waive the reading, a second by Mr. Tatsias, thank you.
Ms. Espinola, Mr. Bahu, Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes. Now, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve expenditures for the sum of $12,126,559.68. So moved by Mr. Lemay, second by Mr. Moran.
Ms. Espinola, Mr. Bahu, Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes. Okay, next up, I'd like to invite the business manager up, Ms. Turner, would you please come back up?
Thank you. So we have three things on, on the business office agenda. The first one is, we need to vote to dispose of two, we have two requests for disposals. One is twelve drafting tables, for safety reasons, the fir, the first couple of pages will explain why. So can we vote for that?
Let me keep these out for the one.
We have to take them separately.
Okay.
Question?
Uh, motion and a second, then we can have a discussion. So motion, entertain a motion by Mr. O'Hare, second by Mr. Lemay, Mr. Lemay?
The question would be relative to drafting tables or whatever else is included, has that equipment been replaced?
Not yet, they, they have an industry letter saying that it has no value, so we can't sell it or anything like that, but if they have a need to replace it, they would. But if there's actual safety reasons, they're disposing of it, not because we've replaced the items yet.
Mr. O'Hare?
Just one, one quick question, there's another sheet here of retiring broken equipment, this, this, is this the same motion?
Um, so the first two pages after the main page.
Yeah.
When we dispose of items, we ask the department head to explain why they want to get rid of it, and, and to attach a value, so that we know. And the first page, the first memo is from Margaret Samento-
Yeah.
-explaining that it doesn't have value. The second page is from Design and Visual Communications, instruct, the instructor saying it has no-
We're doing them separate.
Hmm?
We're do, going to do the other stuff separate.
The two different, right.
They're just doing the drafting tables right now?
Right.
Mr. O'Hare, did you have a question about the-
Drafting, no, no. I have no question on the draft.
Next one, you're going to have a question, okay.
Oh, I see.
Very good. Any other questions, can we do a roll call?
Ms. Espinola, Mr. Bahu, Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes. Okay, next move, go ahead.
The next item that, the next request is disposal of broken, aged, and obsolete equipment from the library, and there's several pages of items that are with value on the web, so they, they could have a value of fifty dollars, you know, twenty dollars.
Okay, so we need a motion and to dispose, and then a second, and then we can discuss.
Yeah.
Then Mr. Tatsias, then Mr. O'Hare seconds it. Does Mr. Tatsias make the motion, Mr. O'Hare? I think Mr. O'Hare had his hand up first.
I don't see it here now, but I know it's in here, because I saw it before, you're eliminating a smart board, and I just thought that smart board technology was relatively new, and people were fighting to get smart boards in the class. What happened to, this, this, how, how old was this smart board?
Right, I don't know exactly how old, um, oh, no, there's a bunch of- I don't know how old the smart board is, but it does say it was broken. I do know that with the construction project, they did bring in a bunch of new, more up-to-date-
Yeah, I understand that, but if you've got a smart board, and you think it's broken, I mean, how do you break something like that in such a short period of time? That's my point.
Right, right, I think this is, according to a conversation, it's not listed here, and if you want me to find that out, I can, but I think this is one of the old ones, because it says smart projector, not the smart board.
Now, there's some smart boards on page three and four.
The list-
Right, those are old, yeah.
That, that almost doesn't seem possible, that you can break that many in a short period of time.
Right.
They're not broken, they're, if you read the, if you read the column, I think it says obsolete, I, this is the first time I've seen this list, but it says obsolete, so I think that-
Roger, excuse me. Let me just continue that, if you're going to jump in, but if it's obsolete, if you've got that many, if, if, this is relatively new technology, and all of a sudden you get, there's about six or seven in here that are broken, and it didn't happen overnight, so what were they doing, just sitting in a room?
I think we need some clarification, and I would like to just interject, Mr. O'Hare, I think you're thinking, these are the ones we just put in with the construction project?
No, I'm thinking, I'm, I'm, all I'm thinking of is what I'm reading here, and even if it was the oldest one you had, that's still relatively new technology.
So missing trays and pens, or the trays and pens are broken? I can make a suggestion, or you can make a substitute motion to not get rid of those until we get a little more information on them? Would that be something you'd be interested in, Mr. O'Hare?
No, why do-
An explanation?
No, I'm looking for some information on why we're getting rid of smart boards so soon, after we- soon, after we had the longest, not a long period, but a long, people were dying to get smart boards in this, in this school. There's only a few existing. That's it, just, if I had an answer with that, I'd be fine.
Ms. Turner, do you have somewhere?
I can definitely investigate more, if you'd like, but just so you know, these are not the ones that we just got with the recent...
I know that, I'm not saying that.
Yeah, right.
I'm just reading what you have in the book.
These are the ones, but I'll find out if, you know, more about what's exactly wrong with them, and if they're, but the value is listed on the side, so...
What's the, what's the, what's the value of a brand-new smart board?
Thousands.
Okay, and you had a short period of time, and all I'm concerned is, for Christ's sake, it's $1,000 for a piece of equipment that doesn't last long.
The, I'll find out...
I'm going to ask Ms. Turner, if the board agrees, we just table this till the next meeting.
Sure.
And you can get a little more detail on it, possibly, I guess, more detail on, you know, when they were purchased, how old are they, and some more of what's wrong. I'm sorry, Mr. Tatsias, I jumped over you, you had your hand up.
No, that's fine. When you say dispose, what are we going to do with them? Will we be able to derive any value from them?
So what they would do, what we do is, we offer it to our community schools for the value that, the web value that they found for such an item, and this is what gives me the impression these are the old, old ones. Because the three, the new ones we had were a few thousand dollars each. The value on these are 300 to 400, if you look on the last column. So I do believe these are the ones that the school had for years.
Right.
But just to confirm and put you at ease, I will find out and get exact reasons why they're disposing of these particular items. There are serial numbers, so we can look into the purchase date and give you more details.
Mr. Tatsias, you all set?
Yeah, I just wondered, are we, are we donating these to a...
First, we offer them to our community, our member communities.
And then?
And if they don't want it, then we would donate or trash, depending upon if we get any interest.
We wouldn't sell them just to students, or...
I don't think we've, we've ever done it to, you know, to students, but that might be an idea.
I don't know who else could use something like this, if a local daycare center...
Right.
They may go overseas. I mean, if they have a value...
You're telling us it's not working, and now you want to sell them?
No.
If they have a value of 300...
I didn't say it wasn't working. I said it was missing trays and pens. In the notes there, it says "missing trays and pens."
I don't think it's just a matter of the missing, I think what it is, is that when we brought in the new ones, you know, like that replaced all of these older ones, because of new technology coming in, just like when we have some laptops, when we get grants, you know, technology grants, and we get funding to bring in new laptops, the old one might still work, but it might not have the most up-to-date technology. But I'll find this out and confirm for you.
Thank you. I'll say, Mr. Tatsias?
Well, I just wondered, if, in fact, nobody in the district wants them, will we be able to recoup some of the value?
Well, again, once I find out exactly what's wrong with them, if they are the old, like I said, the fact that they went through it, they wouldn't throw it out if we needed it for a classroom. They wouldn't leave a, you know, if it was repairable, or if there was a way of repairing it for a cheap cost, we wouldn't get rid of it. So I'm assuming it's barely, it has barely any value right here. It's $300, but I'm sure we can try to sell them if someone is willing to buy it.
I would think that there's always somebody wanting to buy anything.
Right.
You know, they may go overseas someplace, you know?
Well, the problem with that is, these are large things, so if we were shipping it, the shipping might be more than the value, you know, the shipping cost. So, but I, I'll find out, though. I'll find out what exactly is wrong and see if any, you know, if there's any use to anyone.
Very good. Mr. Lemay, then, Mr. Moran?
If you don't mind, Billy Joe, if you're going to be looking into that, I would, I would be interested in, on the first page, "smart projector." The status is broken, but my concern would be manufactured in 2010. Probably an explanation on how it broke. I mean, I don't even see the worth, what it was new versus in its current state, but, as you said, there is a serial number, but manufactured in 2010, that's only six years old. I don't know how long they last, but I'd like to know what happened.
Okay.
That's my only question, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moran?
Ms. Turner, you know, the smart board is like, you know, you replace your computer, you don't replace the monitor.
Right.
I mean, the smart board is technically that end of it, correct?
Okay.
And then you have all these projectors that said they needed a bulb, so we're getting rid of them. Replace the bulb, replace the bulb, replace the bulb, but that, I don't know.
Sounds funny.
I think if you're going to do it, I'm sorry, but I'd like to get more detail, put down the list and say, "Why are we getting rid of this, 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 and this?"
Right, I would, too.
Or is this, these projectors obsolete, they're sitting in a room somewhere, we don't use them anymore?
Right. That's what my impression was, yes. That they've replaced it with the new and, new and improved versions.
I've had to replace a bulb in a projector, and there's much as the machine sometimes.
Okay.
All right, and that's where, we don't know what the cost of a replacement bulb is. Because you can go online, you can find them, and arrange your price, but sometimes they just rise to the level, and they're only good for 20,000 hours or 10,000 hours, and then you have to go through the problem again. And what they're doing now with technology is they're making it so it's almost disposable, and you have to bring in the new.
Thanks for the clar...
And that's the sad part.
Thanks for the clarification. I'd like to finish by saying, you know, you know, I've bought new computers, and I just buy new hardware, new software, whatever, I don't replace my monitor necessarily.
Right.
I mean, to me, the smart board is the monitor.
I...
So we've changed, we did that, or we've changed the software company.
It's inside. It's, I believe, and again, this is...
I'm going to have, I'm going to have Ms. Davis come up in a second to explain the smart board, because it's not...
I know what it is.
I wouldn't be the right choice for that. I wouldn't feel appropriate to speak to that level of technology.
Okay.
But over the years, smart boards have upgraded to different levels of smart boards. Before, there was projectors that weren't connected to the smart board. Now there's projectors connected to the smart boards. There's all different levels.
Okay.
I would agree that we need to do further investigation before we can really speak about this.
Right. So this is, this is shared by the department heads, and they have the expertise in these areas. That's why we asked them to prepare the memo, because I'm an accountant, but, you know, when you have a MacBook, an Apple MacBook, the actual technology is inside the monitor, you know? You know how, like, if you had your desktop, you could sell, buy new hardware, but if you were replacing this laptop, you can't keep the screen, because it's all one piece?
I understand that.
Right. Well, I think that's what the smart board is, when they're disposing of. But again, this is a good question. I'll ask her to add a column and explain, you know, what was wrong with it and why we are not replacing laptops.
I'd rather have better clarification than have to say, "Why did we change the software company?"
I'll say, okay. So we're going to table that for next time. Mr. Tatsias, I'm sorry.
Just, not to belabor this whole thing, but all these items, and when it comes to this type of technology, I have no idea. But what they were doing before now is being replaced with something else. There's not a hole, you know what I'm saying?
Right. That's true.
So they're just taking up space someplace.
Right. But I'll, yes, she, again, they wouldn't get rid of something. I know, like, for instance, if we had an extra smart board, that they would keep a spare in case something happened in one, in one room.
Right.
So these items were really determined to be obsolete or unusable by the librarian. I'll get that extra column added, you know, with further clarification of why.
And if they're taking up space, we need, you know, valuable.
I can just make one recommendation. Pictures worth a thousand words, a couple picture could be a couple thousand words, so maybe if we could see the difference between the two, that would help.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And the next is simply to let you know that the audit, the FY16 audit, as I mentioned in the previous memo, it's, there's three components to it. The FY16 financials, the A133 program, which is our grant, where they find one of our major grant programs, and they audit that, which they've decided to do the food service program, and the end-of-the-year report. That audit will continue on January 9. So they come in the fall, they do their one week of field work, go back, find more questions, and come back. So that's going to resume on January 9. And then the last item is one transfer, which is after these sheets, and it's moving money from one line item to another in science.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of $3,000 from the Science Tech Media to science instructional equipment.
Move.
By Mr. Moran, second by Mr. Lemay. Roll call?
Ms. Espinola, Mr. Bahu, Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you.
I keep my page, sorry. Okay, old business? Anybody want to speak on old business?
Go ahead.
Okay, any, oh, Mr. O'Hare.
Just one thing in reference to the Polaris.
Oh, yes.
Piece that we're working on, I met with the family a couple of weeks ago. Everything is starting to move, waiting. I talked to members of the family today also, and we're just waiting for some components, elements that we're going to use in the memorial, and hopefully that will be within a three to four weeks maximum, and maybe we can have something in the beginning of March.
I have to say, Mr. O'Hare, you've done a lot of work to get this put together. Thank you very much.
Well, it was slow going at the beginning, but now we're rolling.
You've spent a lot of, a lot of your time, and it's appreciated. Thank you. Anything else for old business? Okay, any new business? Okay, no committee person motions. Next, we'll go to reports of subcommittees. Entertain a motion to approval of the September 17th Great Hall Technical High School Building Committee Report by Mr. Tatsias, second by Mr. O'Hare.
Ms. Espinola, Mr. Bahu, Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes. There were no monthly approvals, so there's no votes needed. Just to take a moment of personal privilege and wish all you happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Hope you have a great time over the next few weeks.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned by Mr. Moran, second by Mr. Tatsias.
Ms. Espinola, Mr. Bahu, Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes.